We'll adjust that as we go.
I don't know.
Call this regular meeting, Grand Forks City Council to order. And the first item of interest is the adoption of the agenda. Motion, Councilwoman Doherty, Councilwoman Kendall, all those in favor. Three sets of minutes, September 23rd, special meeting minutes. A motion to adopt. Councilwoman Doherty, Councilwoman Croft, all those in favor. September 30th, special meeting minutes. Motion to adopt. Councilwoman Byers, Councilwoman Kendall, all those in favor. And the September 30th, regular meeting minutes. Motion to adopt. Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Croft, all those in favor. And council reports this evening. Do you have a...
I'll start with me because I've got no more questions.
Well, and let me clarify something with Councilwoman Doherty. Councilwoman Doherty is kind of been liaising with the MAPS program over there with that Habitat initiative. So, how's that going?
It's moving very good. And I wish I attended the party at Harley Village, the lady that turned on her gears. And I brought flowers and a card from the mayor and the council and the staff.
You did so well.
And she was very happy. And the Border Groins are doing good in the hockey. It went on a week.
Ah, I see.
That's my report, Doherty.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Sure. Hope you attended the first annual city council and staff golf game. And that was a lot of fun. And it was clear that all the people that were there already enjoyed the opportunity to get together outside of work and kind of drop the barriers of formality and all that kind of stuff and have some fun. So, I think that was a real positive thing. Looking forward to others like that. I didn't just allow them to gain, but it was okay. And we had a meeting with Alex Manikul, yourself, and Councilors Byers and Councilwoman Kendall. And I thought that was a very positive meeting. I have an idea of my homework, which was to do with GMOs, but I promised to get to it. What else? What else? I think that's it. We've got a downtown business association meeting happening tomorrow. And that's for general, for the general membership. So, we're going to have that over at Community Futures. And that's going to be an opportunity for those folks to start thinking about what input they might have for the next town hall meeting, where we're going to be looking at our phase two of the revitalizing. So, I'll bring back my report when I get it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Byers?
Um, thank you. We don't have a gathering this evening. Is there a room? Yes, well, I need to meet. Okay. I'll start my report with October the 4th. I attended the Kettle River Watershed Management Plan Stakeholder Advisory Group on behalf of the mayor. And it was held in Midway. The agenda focused on water conservation. They were sharing a roundtable discussions on successes within the region, challenges and opportunities in the water use sector. Greenwood recently spent, council members have formed us close to $1 million on securing their water treatment to plug the leaks, as he said. That was finalized last spring. The roundtable discussion on water metering with, and they got to water metering because it was quite evident that suggestions, one of the key suggestions was developing a five-year timeline whereby all municipalities would develop and implement a metering installation program through their jurisdictions. And rethinking of landscaping level practices. You know, we have to, no longer do we envision acres of green grass. We've got to start turning that around. And the short of it was, the case for water use reporting in B.C., and I gave a copy to our C.A.O. counting every draw, was brought up at the meeting. And we have all been asked to read it, so I'll give you a copy as well. And Graham Watt emphasized that this report came out of the open organ. And he said, he recommends that they all read it before their next meeting. And so that they could get, they want to keep it a simple principle in water conservation. And the fact is, nobody knows how much water we're using. Nobody. And it's going to have to, it's going to be a long process. And we know, as they stated in the session, that they're not going to have full compliance. We discussed, you know, well, what do you do with a fellow that, you know, just bypasses your water meter as well? Those things are going to happen. But over, over the long timeframe, there's going to be compliance gradually. And it's going to be a long education program. And working with our constituents in that to realize the importance that, you know, this water could run out one day and we're leaving nothing for our grandchildren and their children. And then following that, the Boundary Dog sled Association held their annual fall supper. And that was the fourth one on October the 5th at the seniors hall. And this year's race has been announced. It's going to be the dog sled sprint classics. It's going to be a whole different format. The races will be sanctioned by the International Dog Sled Association. And it'll be more spectator friendly. They'll be running two, four, possibly six and eight mile races. And they're having it at Jewel Lake. So, it'll be more spectator friendly and they'll have a two-day event up there. So, there'll be more information coming out of that. The fall supper that they held is their annual fundraiser and it was very well attended and a lot of support. On October the 9th, I attended the regional district committee policy...
Procedures.
Procedures, yes. Policy executive and personnel committee.
That's right.
Yeah. There's no procedures.
I thought...
Don't confuse me. So, it is, I attended them on behalf of his committee. And that meeting was held in Trail. And as a footnote, I have celebrating the International Day of the Girl Child with FCM was on October the 11th. So, that was an announcement. And that leads me into my discussion on the Head Start for Young Women's Program that I introduced this morning at the Committee of the Hall. And the proposal from FCM, it is funded by the Women's Institute of Canada. Currently, the FCM does have a program called Women in Local Government that was started back in 2006, celebrating 10 years of action, innovation and results, where they're targeting reaching 30% of female participation in local government by 2026. And as a spin-off, there's always the talk of engaging the youth in our communities and getting them interested in the political arena or interested in their community in general. So, the Head Start program was launched, announced at FCM in May, the end of May when we were down there. And it was also an opportunity to, well, they pushed it out there that they would be looking for seven pilot communities across Canada to launch this program. And it'll be driven by the youth that are participating, ideally six to 12 young girls between the ages of 16 to 24. And it'll be focused and driven by themselves. And they will identify a project that they would like to launch based on their perceptions of what local government is and how do they feel that they would be participating if they took that step? Or why don't, why wouldn't they take that step? So, tonight, I wanted to bring, and this is a good time to do that. I wanted to, at the Committee of the Hall this morning, I did raise the point that I needed support. So, I had spoken with our C.A.O. When I, I had gone ahead with the interview process and applied. And when Grand Forks was accepted as one of the seven communities across Canada, there's one in B.C., Alberta, and the rest are in eastern Canada. One outside of Ottawa, one in Quebec.
What I call it.
Yeah, yes. And it's a one-year project to start with. But I see this as an opportunity for our council to get and engage with the youth in our communities. Close by. So, the motion was to receive support from the city of Grand Forks to launch this Head Start for Young Women program in Grand Forks and take it to the budget table for 2014 or something.
You make the motion. Councilwoman Doherty, second to motion and discussion.
I'm just wondering if, because it is, I mean, it sounds like a great program. I've read through the literature. Is there something in place for you on that?
No, right now, you have 85% of the presence in politics. But what I'm saying is, this is going to be a start to young people in our community with this initiative. And I can see it moving on. We have, in the past, talked about a youth council.
In general.
Yeah, in general. And initiating some involvement from our high school, even with student council. But we've never taken it anywhere. So, this, when this project is completed, there will be opportunities for us to carry on in our homes privately. So, this one is initiating for them.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
What we can do as a council is our prerogative after, after when we're here. They, I would love to see it continue on and open up right over.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Yeah, I think it sounds like a remarkable program as well. Do you have any idea how the candidate is chosen here?
It's not so much chosen. We're going to go out and I'm going to be speaking to the high school. And I've already spoken to self-appalling Jennifer Redmore. I've spoken to Community Futures, because they have youth programs going on. So, we're going to draw, it might not be, it might not be as easy as you think. Hopefully, we get a big turnout. But speaking to Melissa from FCM in Ottawa, I thought of the bigger picture. I was, I was envisioning, you know, 25 or 30 and how big of a region can I branch out to? Realistically, they'd like to see a small group because they're young girls. And they are, you know, this is a whole new field for them.
It's intimidating.
It can, could be very intimidating. And I also, when I heard of, you know, that 16 to 24-year-olds, I mean, I know somebody who's 29 and 30. But those are the type of ladies we can bring into the fold as mentors as well and others.
Ready for the question? I do support this, I think it's a great initiative. Councilman Smith?
So, you said it's FCM funded?
It is funded by the Women's Institute of Canada through FCM. There is not a lot of, it's not like we're going to get a check for so much money. They will support us in background if we need materials.
Basically, some mentor, those types of things. Probably, what she said, a few thousand, a few thousand dollars. We just have to include that into our financial plan.
So, we'll know more about that when we get closer to our budgeting process, yeah.
And our project made a credit as well, the young ladies.
So, there will be some costs involved.
Yeah, that's right. You don't have an idea of what that might be. I think from our perspective, effectively, I think it's going to be more of an in-kind component and basically some form of the mentorship from within our organization. Because depending on the project they pick, they might, you know, because we've had students come in, engineering students in the past, our kids have been talking about engineering. I've had a young lady that worked with Sasha, our manager of engineering, developed services for a few minutes. Some people might find what our corporate officer does, what the CFO does. So, they'd be looking for a little bit of mentorship potentially. So, it could be just the in-kind component. It could be the leadership that the council offers from the in-kind component as well. So, we don't, I don't anticipate any large costs, you know.
Ready for the question? Oops, Carrie.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kendall?
Thank you, worship.
I'm sorry, is that...
Well, I was, I did, I did attend Alex's, NPL's, Adam and Amy's. I was in, you were there.
All right. Counselor Smith?
I attended the annual golf fund, the annual court. And through that, we managed to find four running souls in myself to put in a curling team at the men's league this year. So, the city will be represented this year. A better path will be there. And our C.A.O. is part of this assembly of Catholics. I attended the monthly meeting of Bonder Museum Society. This has kind of been an unbelievable year for them, I feel. They're putting the finishing touches on their new 40-by-40 display building up there. They're actively pursuing solar electricity to light it and to heat and cool it. So, they're, they're working really hard on that. The Duke Warflower, the Heritage Home Center there, I think has been a wonderful success this year. The kind of support is...
Councilwoman Byers?
Councilwoman Byers and I mentioned Grand Forks and everyone else who's been involved there. And that's going to continue to be a really feather and hat of everyone involved.
Pretty tons of green arriving.
It's not a turn. Yeah, the lead is done, according to Walter Wallace. Well, this, yeah, they're, the new cloth for the milling machine should be there. So, hopefully, they'll be making white flour in the near future. So, I'd just like to congratulate everyone there. It was really nice at that meeting to sit with a lot of people who've been on that board for a long time and see some greater enthusiasm at that table again. So, I think that's a real positive thing to do. And I along with everyone else have attended the specials with Alex and Hankel. And last thing on my report, I participated in a Reacher Reader campaign. I spent an hour with the Border Groins outside of the Gazette. Had a stellar bunch of people come through and donated a pile of money. And I think the total was $760 or something they raised this year. So, it was great. And the Border Groins guys were really good. It was really fun to spend it all.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Croft?
Okay. Did the Reacher Reader thing. See, you just, you better get a whole paper.
I wasn't cheating for that.
And it was actually pretty awesome to interact with the Border Groins and stuff like that. So, and good response from, from people in the community. So, that was kind of nice to see. Along those same lines, Ms. Dopey has set up a meeting with Minister Linda Larson to talk about the funding that they get and the cutbacks and stuff. So, she's asking if I would be at that meeting. Which is, we haven't got a firm time yet, but I think it's going to be on the 24th. So, I'll be attending that. And attended the seniors dinner that Daniel Chu hosted. And Cher was awesome enough to speak on behalf of the city because you were a town. And again, the community looks forward to it, like it was even before the advertising. A lot of the spots were taken because people marked up their calendar for last year. And to see Daniel, yeah, was kind of nice. And that's, well, okay, the golf thing, and nobody died, so that was good. Things happened before, I'm sure. And I guess that's my...
Thank you very much. And I'm going to pass on the report. I think you covered all the highlights of it. Just like to congratulate the group that decorated the camp bar building.
Oh, yeah.
Speaks to the enthusiasm of the group to move forward.
Sure.
Yeah. And yes, we did that this morning, talked about the asset management meeting. But again, it was extremely worthwhile. Mr. Allen had set it up so that he knew a lot of players that were there that were there to hear what was going on from the field. We had Glenn Brown from the ministry. And we had a representative from the federal government. There were also a lot of other engineering firms and various other kinds of people in the room. So, we were under close scrutiny. We had a great handout. And I think the city for having the visuals. We didn't use overheads or the usual flip charts. We, I think we came across strong and we came across confident that we were up in front with what we were asking. And we made a point of pointing to ourselves as a potential demonstration community. The other thing that I really enjoyed saying was that we were a healthy business. That we were basically, you know, if you want to put your money on a good horse, we're one at this point that's running well. I thought that we should brag about the fact that we're doing day-to-day business on a solid footing. And so, you know, we're the kind of community where it would be worth the risk to allow us to move ahead of the pack. It was kind of interesting, there was some strong words there said by some people about the fact that what has been happening historically is that if you screw up and don't plan and everything falls apart, then the ministry and the government steps in and helps you. And so, to turn that around, we're saying clearly, you know, show appreciation and reward communities that do get their homework done and move forward. So, that was our message. I think it was well-nerved again. Thank you very much to the C.A.O. for setting up.
Okay, and motion to accept, council report. That's Councilwoman Byers, all those in favor. Regional district? I don't have too much to say there on the regional district other than that we have our October 24th meeting coming up. I'm really hoping that everybody can be at that. I know Councilwoman Byers has committed that she can't get out of that. It was unfortunate, but unavoidable. But for all the rest of you, you were comfortable in your station because of the necessity of possibly dividend a month. Okay, well, we're certainly going to, again, show confident together face to the regional district in these discussions around the project. And any questions on the regional front?
What was the date for that?
October 24th. Councilwoman Croft?
What's that, volunteer breakfast? Now that's...
No questions? Okay, motion to accept the regional district report. And we have information items. Stay to speak. So, motion to accept our decisions related to the disposition of the items. Councilman Smith, Councilwoman Doherty. FCM received for discussion, consideration, participation in the program. We've done that this evening. And I think our motion is on the books. In the auditor general's report, I hope you've all read that and memorized the important parts. There'll be a quiz on it. For anything, Mr. Allen, that you would like to say on that annual report?
I'd just like to say that all communities will be subject to potentially having the auditor general come in. So, we don't know what that impact is going to be until we get some feedback from the other local governments that have had this review done in their, in their organization. So, once there is a little bit more feedback on that, I'm expecting to touch base with a couple of the organizations and have the auditor general team come in. So, I can report back on any effect we might be feeling of results. But I know there's a tentative feeling in the industry on this. But I think after the auditor general comes through and the impact is minimized on the organizations, it'll be assessed confidently. So, I'll be with you, Councilwoman Byers, as a minister of the process.
And the next item is Mr. Hankey, the LDS, offering us assistance with our higher classes. And so, we'll receive that and I'm sure that that's being followed up on by our C.A.O. And that includes the items on our shortlist this evening. So, all those in favor of his position? Go, Carrie. Okay, we have two bylaws. The final reading on bylaw number 1976, 2014, our annual tax exemption bylaw. So, this is final reading. Can I have that motion for final reading? Councilwoman Doherty, Councilwoman Croft, discussion? All those in favor? And the next item is, this is the rural residential to our three multiple family and has to do with the wildlife also, that it is available for use by religious groups in this community. So, we are looking here at giving final reading to bylaw 1987 to reclaim property at 7852 Street. So, Councilwoman Croft, Councilwoman Doherty, all those in favor? Carrie? Now, late items. And we're open to any questions from the media or from the citizens, more or less. Can you like, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two of you, I guess, the C.A.O. Could he explain the process with speed limits? How they're set in a city or a town? How you change them?
I think you'd be pleased with that, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Mr. Grant, the speed limits are standing speed limits in the municipalities. Our 50 kilometers are set all across B.C. There was recently a move in E.P.C.M. to have this, have the speed limit altered. And that resolution was brought forward. And I don't know if it was defeated or not.
Speaking of...
I think it was defeated. Where we have the ability to control our speed limits is on our municipal streets and in high, high density areas. We control by placing playgrounds and we have the ability to control the speed limits within our municipality to a certain extent. So, you know, if the speed limit was to be altered, we would look at the rationale for why. And it would be supported by a, generally, a, an engineering report, a safety report, a traffic impact study or a traffic impact or safety analysis done for that for some recommendations to move that forward. So, as we look at the developmental park area, a high-density area, there's a lot of development. We might do something there. We also might try to institute some traffic calming mechanisms. So, there's all kinds of variables we would look at. But from a traffic, speed limit perspective, it should be done by the traffic engineers via a traffic impact study or a traffic safety study.
So, in the end, Mr. Mayor, it's a provincial decision.
Provincial decision on the main highway.
Yes.
On our highways within the city.
And within the city, the streets and roads, the council, with an engineering board, et cetera, et cetera, change.
Very much so. Yes, council holds that ability to do that, stop, bring forward the report. And council, at that point, make a decision whether they do it.
We have an approach to the second street speeding. Is that a concern that brings this forward in your mind?
That is, in my mind, a real issue in this city.
The second street.
Second street.
Yeah. People rushing to work and it's been something that draws our attention on a number of occasions. So, you're saying, are we going to... So you're saying, aren't we going to address that?
No, I'm not asking that question. I just wondered what the process was.
Right.
And it seems very complex. Well, I'm not sure it's complex, Mr. Allen.
No, I, I think it is something that's very real and attainable for us to deal with. One of the things the council has asked for is an engineering report to have a look at the intersection. I think it was Second and Market, potentially for a four-way. What we are going to be doing is we're working on Second and 68th as well, in cooperation with Interfor, looking at that intersection as well to create some, enhance some safety aspects of that intersection. When we have the traffic engineer come to town, or because council has asked that, we'll be, for a financial plan this year, and we'll be able to look at that intersection as well. The manager of development and engineering services will have that report generated and the recommendations are important to be part of the council's consideration. And just so we know, where it comes to Market Street, one of the challenges we'll be doing is referring our, our, our request to the ministry transportation. They look at the queuing, which is called stacking of vehicles during the peak hour of the one peak, of the peak day of the year. So they look at this and they use this water analysis, they'll use it in the traffic analysis of, let's say, August 20th, or if that's the peak day, or the school day. They use that as the peak day and they say, how much room do you have to store vehicles in your community? So, and that's storing them on the main street while the light is being changed. Because the ministry has made it clear they don't want to change their level of service on highways, arterial roads. And that meaning the level of service would be the, the frequency that the lights come on and off and the duration of time.
I would like you to add 72nd to that list because that intersection is also a bad one.
I thought that was the one that we had actually been talking about, the 72nd. Sorry, 72nd. So it is 72nd. I know council has asked for that, it's with the manager of engineering services.
When you said 68th, 72nd and.
Market.
Market, yes.
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor, with regard to roundabouts. Couple of weeks ago, I was in Vancouver, walking around Kitsellado, came across a couple of small, they're 12, about 12, 14 feet. Roundabouts, concrete, like this table, this would be concrete and in the middle of some flowers and shrubs. And they worked. There wasn't any speeding through there. And I imagine they were put in because people were using them as a thoroughfare. But it's a consideration. A second question. What kind of process did the auditor general use? He mentioned, or she, I'm not sure.
She?
Yeah, she. She. I'm very grateful for the input I've received from you, your staff and key stakeholders since our office opened in January. And she goes on and talks about the input and so on. What kind of process was that?
Mr. Mayor, what happened was there was a survey that was sent out to us, to staff from our perspective, and I think there were some correspondents that went through to the different elected representatives tables. But there was some, there was some requests to us, basically talking about what we thought potentially going to be to our panel, we thought about, from an administrative perspective, we talked about concerns regarding financial impacts for our organizations, with the Auditor General's coming in with their team, it doesn't affect the operation of our organization. Some of the other concerns that we had were the length of time these things would have, would have an impact on our budget process, would have an impact on our, on our ability to continue day-to-day operations. Those are some of the feedbacks that we had. And that's really what our concern is about our business. The, the process is put in place to, I believe, for the provincial government to ensure that, you know, the provincial government is looking out for the taxpayer developers as well. You know, and they have assembled a team to, to acquire from us what we felt is a team. But they also have a very strong team from a, a local government background to, to support those needs. So they were able to develop all this material and now they've gone out to communities that have had requests to have themselves look at, or others have had, one of them looked at.
So how often, will that be an annual thing?
We don't know yet. We simply had the initial consultation and, and she's addressed us at multiple functions. I believe she addressed AKDLG. I believe, I know she addressed the Local Government Management Association. She addressed the CAOs across the province, in Calgary and Victoria. She's been out trying to get that information out there, but there's a lot of reservations on a lot of communities right now that are, are concerned with what that impact is going to have, Mr. Mayor. So, so that's where we're at right now. But this is the initial process. This is the kickoff this year. So it's going to be the growing pains in this and I, I believe it's a five-year process and then whether the provincial government continues it or not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments on the floor? Okay, motion to adjourn. Counselor Dory.